To 7.4.
Hi there. Good evening, council members and Madam Mayor. I'm Kim Obstfeld. I'm with PMC Consulting. I've been working closely with city staff to work on the city's housing element update for the 2015 to 2023 planning period. So just a quick overview. I just want to update you on where we're at with the housing element update process. You have before you a complete draft of the housing element, and tonight we are looking for a recommendation to go ahead and/or approval to go ahead and submit that draft to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, for their compliance review. They'll look at the document and make sure that it meets statutory requirements. I want to hit on a couple of key components of the housing element tonight in my presentation. The first is the regional housing needs allocation analysis, just describing the methodology that we took there and making sure that we have a clear understanding of how we're presenting that information. And the other piece is taking a look at key program changes that we're recommending from the city's existing 2007 to 2014 housing element to the new version you have in front of you tonight. And then we can talk briefly about next steps. So again, just an overview of the update process. The city does have an existing housing element that was adopted and certified by the state in 2010. So we use that document as a baseline and as a foundation to go ahead and update the housing element for the new planning period. We made updates based on our review of existing policies and programs, new data that's available, 2010 census data and other demographic information sources, looking at changes in the community, and then certainly throughout the process, looking at input from the community. With that, we've drafted a complete housing element, which again, you have in front of you tonight. With your approval, that document will be submitted to the State Department for Housing and Community Development, or HCD, for their review. Once we've got their comments, which they, no matter how good of a job we do, they always have a little something to say. Hopefully, that'll be minimal. We'll come back to you with their recommendations and present the housing element for adoption, and then go ahead and resend the document back to the state for final review and certification. A quick update on the schedule. So we made the draft housing element available to the public beginning Friday, May 23. We sent out notifications to our stakeholder list and posted the document to the website, and it's still available today. We took the document to the Housing Committee on June 4 for their review and discussion, and then took it to Planning Commission on June 26. Of course, we're here tonight. And then we anticipate sending to the state as early as Wednesday or Thursday this week, depending on the outcome of the meeting this evening. The HCD review period can take up to 60 days. We are eligible for streamlined review because the city has taken steps to stay in compliance with current state housing law. There's five aspects of that that the state is looking for, and we're in compliance with all five. In my recent experience, it's taking 30 to 45 days. So it's not much of a break, but it could be slightly less, depending on their workload. We anticipate coming back in the fall for adoption hearings. And then at that point, we'll resubmit to HCD. And that final review and certification is essentially just a formality. It tends to go very quickly. They rarely need the full 90 days. The only exception is if there's some substantive change that comes up during the adoption hearing process. We have conducted a comprehensive public outreach campaign. We have a webpage dedicated to the project on the city's webpage. It displays opportunities for input and has all of the presentations from past meetings. We held a community workshop back on March 13. We had an online survey posted for a couple of months for folks that aren't able to attend events or wanted to provide additional input. We held a roundtable discussion session, which was very productive, with local housing and service providers on April 10. We've been to three Housing Committee meetings. We held a study session with Planning Commission in March, and again, took the draft to them for review in June. And we were here with you for a study session back on April 22. That, I'll go ahead and dig into the regional housing needs allocation. And again, this analysis is a required component of the housing element. State law requires HCD, and I won't belabor this too much because I know we talked about this at the last meeting, but HCD is required to go ahead and project housing needs for the entire state for the planning period. And just a note, the RENA period varies just slightly from the housing element planning period to confuse as many people as possible. And I haven't been able to get a clear explanation yet as to why that is. But it is slightly off. So the RENA projection period is from 2014 to 2022. So HCD comes up with their statewide number. That goes out to regional planning organizations. For the city of Emeryville, that's the Association of Bay Area Governments. So they received an allocation of almost 190,000 units and gave out their distribution to cities and counties through a long and somewhat painful process. The city of Emeryville was allocated 1,498 units. That is somewhat of an increase from the 2007 to 2014 period, when the RENA was 1,137 units. That's mostly due to a change in methodology with ABAG this round. Their methodology was revised to be in greater alliance with Plan Bay Area. So in an attempt to link jobs and housing is basically the strategy they took. So again, we're at 1,498 units for this RENA period. That allocation is then broken up into income categories, very low through above moderate. And then the state, recent state legislation from a couple of years ago requires us to take a look also at extremely low-income housing needs, which in compliance with state law are estimated to be 50% of the very low-income allocation. So all told, about 32% of the allocation is for lower-income households, or housing appropriate for lower-income households. So just to emphasize that, the RENA is not a quota. There's no requirement that the city actually build these units. The city, it's understood on the state level that the city is not a builder. This is merely included in the housing law as a land use exercise. The requirement is that the city examine available land resources and ensure that opportunities exist for the market to then come forward and produce these units. So the analysis, I understand, looks a little bit funky. Let me go ahead and talk you through that. The first thing we looked at is planned and approved projects. So taking a look at projects that are already in the pipeline. So we do have some that are scheduled to produce affordable housing units, some through the set-aside ordinance, 64th and Christie, which I understand is now ME, Parkside, 39th and Adeline, which is in progress. And then we did take a look at 3706 San Pablo, which is underway with our friends at EAH. So with that, we had a total of 1,837 units already underway. A portion of those were our schedule to be affordable to and deed restricted for affordability to lower-income households. After that, we took a look at vacant and underutilized sites. So the state has established, after a fairly painful review period during the last housing element, as part of that, they established a default density to say what sites could be appropriate to accommodate housing for lower-income households. That default density is 30 units per acre for the city of Emeryville. So when looking at sites that could be appropriate to accommodate housing for lower-income households, that's the number that we were looking at. So any sites that had zoning already in place at 30 units per acre or more, which is why you're seeing that huge number for sites that could potentially accommodate lower-income households. We understand, and this is by no means a projection, we understand that the vast majority of that is going to be developed at market rate and is going to be affordable only to moderate and above-moderate households. But we can show as part of this exercise that those parcels, according to state law, are appropriately zoned to accommodate housing for lower-income households.
Can I ask you a question right now?
Yes, of course.
I don't want to interrupt your, but I know that I want to ask a question about the slide, so.
Sure.
So under vacant and underutilized sites, there's the large number, 3,438. But then the 30, which is below that, I'm stumped by that number 30.
Yeah, those are, and I can pull up the exact properties. There are some, we went with the minimum density in our analysis. And there are some sites on our inventory that were on smaller parcels that were zoned at a minimum of 20 units per acre. So those were extracted from the total and weren't attributed to sites that are potentially feasible for lower-income housing. So that's where you get that 30.
Okay, because the units that are produced by the, that add up to 3,438 could also be market rate, as you're saying. And so separating them, you've just separated basically by size of parcel?
By density.
By density, allowed.
Any other questions on that?
I guess my last comment here is that I know the moderate is in white instead of in blue, but sometimes moderate is included in affordable housing if it's subsidized. And so that total then is 147 units over the 1,837. That's what's planned and approved, and that comes to 8% for affordable units in the planned and approved projects.
Got it, got it.
Just for the public's information.
Thank you. Yeah, and moderate ends up sort of lumped in with above moderate because there is no state standard for that. So in terms of looking out at what sites are feasible and potentially appropriate for moderate-income housing, there's no threshold. You know, it would be a real shot in the dark to try to take a guess at what that might look like. So it's assumed that the market will produce at least a portion of those units that are available for moderate-income households. And again, the vacant and underutilized sites, again, we took a look specifically at vacant sites. We also included a few sites that are owned by the city or controlled by the city, underutilized properties that have an existing floor area ratio that's very low compared to what's allowed, sites that have large surface parking lots that have a real potential for redevelopment or infill development. And all of those sites were envisioned for change in the general plan. For example, Powell Street Plaza or East Bay Bridge, some of those shopping centers are very large sites that it's going to take a while before we quite get there. But they are, you know, there's quite a bit of opportunity there for infill, and certainly, housing is likely to be a part of that. And just showing a map of those sites. So again, number nine and number 16 are, again, are not number, excuse me, 17 and 16. It's hard to see the map even from here. Are those larger shopping centers, and the rest are other sites that are detailed in the housing element. Key program changes. So just walk through some of the changes that we made to the plan program section. We did delete quite a few programs primarily because they were implemented and were no longer relevant. So quite a few were amendments to the planning regulations, all of which were completed. There, just to kind of talk through those. Revising the density bonus, revising regulations for secondary units, allowing live-work and light industrial and mixed-use zones with a CUP, taking care of compliance with Senate Bill 2, which required cities to zone for emergency shelters, transitional housing, and supportive housing, and amending the regulations for compliance with regard to group homes and residential care facilities. Along the same lines, planning regulations were amended to handle design review exemptions for projects with negligible visual impacts, deal with interim zoning classifications until the new planning regulations were adopted, integrate bonuses for green building, and incorporate open space requirements for multifamily housing. We did delete an additional five programs just based on the fact that they were no longer appropriate or were found to be ineffective or the intent was captured in another program. For example, development that fills gaps in unit types continues to be an appropriate policy, but we felt that the intent was captured in other more specific programs during this update. Use of redevelopment agency funds no longer relevant due to the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. And then just to walk through, we did add quite a few programs. These were based on, again, the review of the existing housing program, our understanding of current HCD requirements and best practices, and then input received from the community and decision-makers. We added a program to work proactively to monitor and work to retain existing affordable housing units that are at risk of converting to market rate. We added or called out, added a program to call out the availability of density bonuses and incentives for affordable units. Added a program regarding the Housing Impact Fee and Trust Fund. And note on that one that we'll want to tweak that language just a little bit to reflect events that took place earlier this evening. Supporting state and regional efforts to establish funding sources for affordable housing. The use of redevelopment agency boomerang funds for affordable housing. And the term "boomerang" is kind of being thrown out there, but it's basically money that would have gone into the redevelopment agency via the tax increment financing that's now coming back to the city in the form of general funds. A potential universal design requirement, and we put this in as primarily a study item to look at the potential of making a universal design requirement for a portion of new units. That universal design is already a component of the planning regulations as a density bonus item, but thinking about whether or not we should require a portion of new units to have those features. Taking a look at the potential for housing for persons with disabilities and/or developmental disabilities on city-owned sites. Maintaining and monitoring the housing sites inventory, just keeping that up to date, something HCD likes to see. Advertising the availability of below-market-rate units to school district, city, and child development center employees. During the existing planning period, two below-market-rate units were sold to Emory Unified School District employees, continuing on in those efforts. Promoting architectural diversity in new housing, which came primarily out of our Housing Committee discussions. Continuing to work toward adopting family-friendly design guidelines and looking to promote family-friendly housing on city-owned sites. And then just one last set. Promoting the availability of mortgage credit certificates, which is administered through Alameda County. Providing education and technical assistance to homeowner associations primarily to maintain their eligibility for FHA insured loans, letting people get into the building. Encouraging design features to prevent stormwater intrusion. Looking for opportunities to leverage the fact that a large portion of the city is a priority development area. Looking at funding and things, new things that are coming down the line on that. Implementing eBots strategies. Continuing to look at that link between housing and transit. And revising design guidelines to incorporate community-building features in multifamily housing. The Planning Commission did have a couple of recommendations. Their recommendations were with regard to, or changes with regard to programs. H426 and 275, they wanted to eliminate, oh gosh, the strikeout is not showing up on this slide. So if you could refer to your packet on that one, sorry about that. The first one, they wanted to go ahead and strike the second sentence, which reads, "Consider amending the city's design guidelines to encourage multifamily housing that features eaves, recessed windows, and gabled roofs." And then on the second one, they wanted to, after the word "features," oh, you got the addition, eliminate the text after "stormwater intrusion," after that comma there. Eliminate the rest of that. Just wanting to be less specific in these programs. And on program H733, they wanted to expand on the program as it was written and emphasize interaction both internally among community members living in the building, as well as externally with the street and larger community. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it over for questions and comments. And again, we're looking tonight for you to adopt a resolution to go ahead and approve the submittal of the housing element to HCD.
Mayor, could I make a comment on that last slide, actually? If you would go back, if that's easy. This is the H733, and someday I'll figure out how that numerical system works. I wanted to add another thought about the community-building elements for this, which is about the way parking is arranged and how individual garages reduce community interactions compared to a common parking area, which can also be shared and thereby potentially reducing parking. So I just seemed, it seemed like it would fit in there, and I wanted to suggest that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to say this has been a very extensive, long process. And I compliment your group and the staff, and especially the Housing Committee, that really struggled with this and really kind of tore it to pieces and put it back together again. So a lot of people have worked in this. And I think it's a tight document, and I see no reason why the state shouldn't clap us on the back and give us a good hand. I'd move the resolution. It's a very well-done job.
I'll second that as well. Go ahead, come forward.
I wanted to make a couple of comments. I love reading the housing element.
It's the best document around, isn't it? It is riveting.
Paige Turner.
I'm serious. I really enjoy. I really enjoy reading the housing element. And it underscores that we are in a housing emergency. I mean, the degree to which housing is absolutely out of reach and unaffordable for people in our region is something that we just need to really all be concerned about and coming up with better and better solutions for. And again, I want to appreciate all of staff's hard work on this. And for me, there was one question that I had. There was a mention in here that we needed more single-family homes in Emeryville, and it was just like one line.
Where would they go?
The first thing I thought is, where do we put those? And now I can't find it in my notes, Charlie.
I believe it was a public comment at a workshop.
Oh, okay, all right.
All the public comments were included. They were not.
Okay, all right. I was just curious about that. Thank you. We'll take public comment.
And then I have a few more comments after the public.
Yeah.
One thing that might be good for our community going forward is if we can have our townhouses and condos maybe have something added to the CCNR documents that would compel people to rent for no more than two years and then sell. My mother's condo, for example, her townhouse in Illinois, has this. And what it does is it makes for actual community members in her complex and not just all renters. And we can be a city of actual, long-term people really living here. And I know that we can specify a lot of owner-occupied units going forward, but those can just become rental units easily. But if we had something in the CCNRs that would say, "No, we can encourage you to move after a certain period of time," or, you know, something that would keep us a city of real community members. So I'd like to see that as a part of our housing approach to come.
If I may make a comment or ask staff. I think staff is actually working on some kind of HOA guidelines along those lines already. So I'm glad you raised that.
So I've sort of looked at the housing element, perused it previously. So I sort of understand what it is. It's pretty dense. I agree with what the mayor is saying. It's basically a cause to an emergency housing condition that we have here. But I wanted to say something regarding community building, because there's reference to that. Having kind of housing that encourages community building. Pardon me. And I have argued in the past in that there's, I found no takers here among the staff or the council members. But I'll just say it once again. We keep building these formerly lofts, now the more apartments, either for rent or for ownership condos, with parking garages. And the problem is, the way we're doing these developments, they're podiums, and they are what I refer to as drive-in, drive-out. And so they're very alienating. And they don't build the community. As a matter of fact, they sort of discourage community. And the way, if you look at great cities, they don't have a drive-in, drive-out lofts or condominiums. Instead, they, people walk. This is California. We don't have very good public transit, so it's not really very realistic to walk. So I thought that we should have an intermediate scenario whereby developers put money into a pool, and then the city takes that pool of money and they build scattered throughout the city, public parking garages. And then people would walk the block or two. They'd park in the garage, and they'd walk a block or two to their homes, and thereby activating the sidewalks, buying flowers and what-have-you, pizza or whatever on the way home from work, the two blocks. And they would talk to each other, just like, you know, we're supposed to be encouraging. We're supposed to be activating our citizenry. And you do that by getting people to walk on the sidewalk. So the drive-in, drive-out model is really flawed. It discourages community building. And I'm just sorry that nobody here has saw fit to explore this model. And it, you know, it's sort of, at this point, maybe too late. I mean, we're pretty much already all built out with drive-in, drive-out lofts and apartments. But I would like to see some, have this idea be taken seriously because it's nothing really radical. It's basically how our grandparents built cities. They didn't build the drive-in, drive-in model. This is a sort of a more modern concept. And I just think we should take this kind of approach more seriously. And maybe it might not be too late for some projects in the city. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I heard Brian's comment. You know, Ryan, 20 years ago, we started to do just that. We segregated properties, and we decided we would put parking garages, but nobody wanted to pay for them. Because there wasn't a parking problem then, and people couldn't see in the future, so they wouldn't want to pay for them. So we couldn't get them off the ground. That's how Walnut Creek works. That's why they're successful. That's why they have a downtown and a bus. I came up from downstairs a little bit out of that. You know, I've been working with ABAG now and attending the regional meetings. They have this Regional Prosperity Committee, which I didn't even know existed. And they put a lot of facts out about this stuff. And I think you need to connect with those facts. You know, they talk about the housing. They talk about existing discrimination and problems with landlords and how you can retain tenants. And I would just urge you to take a look at some of those videos.
Anyone else?
I'd actually like to piggyback on Kim Bukowski's last comment, which is asking if there's some way, given the significant number of rental residents who rent in our town, which is about 65%, I believe. And again, this housing crisis that you've mentioned, the way rents, it was said in the housing element, have gone up for two-bedroom units in three years, went up 31% the rent in Emeryville. I would like to ask the council to give direction, and it could be included in the housing element or it could be a separate effort, to look at rent stabilization. I know that there are laws restricting rent control post-1995. That was very well explained in here. But I happen to know that as the city of Alameda is looking at their housing element, they were directed to include at least a task force or some effort by the staff or citizens to look into these issues. And I think Emeryville would be the perfect place to look into that. I know some of our neighbors have those kinds of policies on the books. And because our housing is newer, we won't be able to do the same kind of policies. But I'm curious how we can support those residents since it is 2/3 of our population in terms of rent increases and protecting from that. The other comment I'd like to make is, there's a very interesting chart. We've been talking a lot about renter households versus homeownership households and looking at the at the income for those also is a very stark reality. And I don't want us to paint Emeryville as a place that is going to be unaffordable if we only, we're never going to only allow ownership units, but there's this balance between kind of putting your roots down when you buy a property versus renting and moving on, but recognizing that the rental properties are very important in terms of housing lower-income folks, and we don't want to diminish that and the need for that as well. So some kind of a balance, and I appreciate the ideas that have come forward because I think they're creative, and I hope that our staff can use the housing element as a, you know, policy guide and look at putting those in place over the next few years as well. I also noticed just typos here and there, and I would, I don't want to take the public's time, but I would love to get those to you because I think it could be helpful when you have other eyes on it. I like typos. I was a teacher.
Call the question.
Who made the motion in the second?
You had a motion in the second.
I'm Madison Brinkman. Davis and Brinkman.
Did you want to roll call vote? I'm sorry.
Oh, I have one other question. I'm sorry. Just in a language for the city attorney, if you don't mind. I'm used to, in affordable housing terms, I'm used to seeing extremely low, very low, low-income, moderate, and above. And for some reason, in the ordinance, is it the ordinance that goes along with this? Or am I thinking of a different?
I believe you're thinking of the ordinance that you previously asked.
Oh, it was the previous, so I'm just curious where the term median came in versus the moderate, and also, there was no extremely low. And the numbers were just a little bit different. So I'm curious if the state has changed their policies and how they're divvying up income levels or what the confusion was there. I was surprised to see differences.
I believe that has something to do with how we calculate the affordability, the rent levels and the incomes of people that are at different rental levels. It's, so I think it's a conservative approach. It's like not supposed to be more than 35% of your rent for homeownership and 30, I mean, of your income and 30% for rental. The difference between ownership and rental, by the way, is because ownership, you're building equity, and in rental housing, you're not. So you can, you know, it's justifiable to pay a slightly higher percentage. As far as the median, that kind of confused me, too. I mean, that was, that whole ordinance was written by outside counsel, and I believe it was intended to be like a benchmark, that the other things are measured.
It just didn't seem consistent with our other documents.
It's not an income level that's in the RENA. That's true.
Okay. And could I suggest perhaps in the final version of this, that when you discuss AMI, and I think you even looked at different years with AMI, if you could just put what that Alameda County AMI number is, then anyone reading this would get a better sense of what that means, because otherwise you have to look up what the area median income is, and it does change from year to year. So thanks for the explanation, Turner.
Mayor Asher, before we move away from the housing issue, from some of the comments that came forward from the public today about people, the renters in our community, not being part of the community or not being invested in the community, I frankly do not believe that's a fair categorization, because I know many people in this city that are renters that have been here for 20, 25, 30 years, very involved in this community, and they're renters. So let's not just say the only people that care about the city are homeowners. I don't believe that to be a true statement.
I feel the same way, Nora. I just want to point out that I ran for city council as a renter. And so I was pretty invested. I understand what people are talking about in terms of balance, but I also think that in an urban environment, we may need to recognize that some people don't want to necessarily own a home. The more important thing is affordability.
Right.
That's what can bring people here and keep people here, and we don't have enough tools in that regard. But like I said, I was a renter. I believe that you can contribute quite a lot as a renter in our city. So with that, we'll call the question.
Does anyone on the city council support my idea of looking into rent stabilization and what we could do to support the rental population?
I've asked a couple of questions about this of staff. I would be supportive of that. I mean, understanding that we have a lot of new stock housing and so solutions like rent control or not.
Could I suggest that we bump this back to the Housing Committee, have them take a look at it, analyze it, give us some recommendations?
That's a great idea.
There is a good Housing Committee. They're very dedicated, and I'm sure that they'd bounce it around and come up with some ideas.
Great. Thank you for that suggestion.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Anyone opposed? No? Okay. All right.